Okay, I'd like to call. That's all right. The February 1st of 2022 meeting of the Lacey Planning Commission to order. I'm looking for approval of the agenda and consent items.
So moved.
Moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, thumb up. Opposed? Okay, we move on to public comments, Rick.
Nobody.
Oh, they must not have heard Doug was talking tonight.
Oh, wait a minute, there is, we just showed up.
Okay, great.
This is time for a public comment period. Joel, do you wish to address the planning commission? If so, could raise your hand. Your zoom hand, I should say. Now I see a hand coming up. Oh, yes, Joel does, would like to come in. So Leah, would you promote Joel?
Okay, he's there, should be, hopefully.
Anybody see Joel?
No.
I think it's still in the transfer part, because she'll listen as an attendee, but it doesn't show up there. So maybe we can go on with commissioner reports and we'll see if he had to log off and come back on. We still have him, an attendee listed there, but there's no information underneath that call, that tab, so he might have a bad connection.
Okay, so Joel, we're going to go through commissioner reports and then we'll bring you on back. We'll check in on you. Eddie, anything to report? Nope, Gail?
No.
Daphne? Kieran?
Nothing to report, thank you.
All right, Peg?
No report.
Is everybody on any other screens that I see? Okay, and I have, I have nothing to report.
And Joel's back in the attendee list, so leave, if you see if you can promote him now. See if it'll work.
There, he's coming aboard.
Good evening, Joel, you're in the planning commission meeting and you have an opportunity to address the planning commission, so can you please state your name and address and keep your comments for about two minutes. And you're on mute currently for trying to speak now.
It looks like that, that maybe is the last Joel, we give us one second, I'll try to promote, there's another, there's still one in the attendee, so let's promote.
You can also just allow them to use their microphone.
Yeah. We'll see if this works, if not, then. All right. Like we're having oh, there's, try that one.
Well, I think we're still with some technical difficulties, Joel, if you're there, you're in the plank or you're on mute. Coming in a third time.
It appears Joel is cloning like crazy.
Well, we'll continue to work on the technical difficulties, I, if we can go ahead and move on with the agenda and when we get the technical difficulties worked out, we could always kind of pivot and and provide Joel the opportunity to speak. Also, we can offer too, if he wants to contact us or submit something, you know, via email and writing, we can get that onto the planning commission as well.
Hey. So we're going to move on to, oh, Rick again, directorship.
Yes, I gotta keep on talking. I don't have much of a director's report tonight. I do want to give a kind of a heads up to the council scheduling for this Thursday night's council meeting. Will be one of the pieces that will be presented on the agenda is a inter professional service agreement with the Thurston EDC will be working with them to use some of the funds that weren't spent for scale up, the scale up training program last year, to set up a new program and curriculum for business training, small business startup trains focused on BIPOC and veteran community. So we'll be seeking council's approval of that contract, and if approved, we'll start the training series later this month. So we're excited to test that and then we get through the first cohort of the training, we'll come back and we probably report that down to the council, but we'll also provide some information back to the planning commission. The, the only other thing we have tonight to introduce is as our new planner of staff, Hans Shepherd, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan to provide Hans's introduction.
Yeah, thanks, Rick. So Hans is here to present the 2025 comp plan. Go ahead, Hans. Just joking. So today is, is Hans's second day, so he's just getting the lay of the land, so to speak, and kind of getting his legs underneath him with the city of Lacey. So Hans is a senior planner and comes to us by way of SCJ Alliance, a private consulting firm here in town. He was doing a lot of contract planning work with smaller jurisdictions and and so even though in his role as a private consultant, he was doing a lot of work for, for public purposes. And prior to that, Hans worked for the city of Olympia. And so he's, I found out today, went to Olympia High School, so I've, I guess I, I should have known, I liked him so much. Anyway, I'll turn it over to Hans to introduce himself further.
Hi, everyone. My name is Hans and yeah, as Ryan said, I've definitely been in the Olympia, Thurston County, Lacey area for quite some time, majority of my life, but I've been doing planning for many years now and it's, it's exciting to join back up with the, the public sector and get involved in this. So I'm just excited to be here and happy to meet all of you and thanks for having me.
And by maybe, Wes Chair Watson, if the, the plant commissioners would like to go around and introduce themselves real quick, so Hans kind of gets a perspective of who's all on the planning commission at this point.
Alrighty, I think that's a great idea. Hans, I'm Dave Watson. I'm the chair of the planning commission. Eddie, you're up.
Hi Hans, I'm Eddie Bishop. I've been on the planning commission for about three years now, I think. I live right off College Street between the middle school and the elementary school.
Gail.
I'm Gail Madden. I'm on, I've, I've been here a year, but I, I think we've had one in-person meeting in all that time, and I'm the vice chair.
Karen?
Hi, I'm Kieran McMichael, and I've been on the planning commission for about one year, and I live right on the edge of Lacey Midtown, so such an exciting place to be. I love the walking trails, beautiful city. Welcome.
So you can just say Karen's on the edge. Daphne?
Hi, Hans, I'm Daphne Retzloff. I am in urban growth area, live off of Marvin in McAllister Park and have been on the planning commission for just over three years. So, welcome.
Peg?
Hi, I'm Peg Evans Brown, and I'm the old timer. I've been on the commission about six years, I think. And I like trees and I was on the subcommittee to support Lacey's tree canopy. Nice, nice to have you on board.
Yep. Uh, I think that's all of us. Alrighty. So I think I'm going to interject here, just, just so Doug has to suffer just a little bit longer before he gets to go, but we had an opportunity at last Thursday's council meeting. Was there any other things that we wanted, we felt like we needed to talk, you know, it was kind of short? Any other things we might want to address with the council in the future? I don't know if you had a time to think about any of that, or would you like to think why Doug gives you this presentation? Okay, we'll do that. That way Doug doesn't suffer any further than he has to. And so I'd like to bring in Doug to talk about the stormwater design manual update.
Thank you very much. So this is that we're talking about the proposed revisions to our stormwater design manual. You recall four weeks ago that I had the pleasure of giving you a presentation on Lacey's stormwater design manual, what it's all about, how it applies and why it's being updated. So since then, we've managed to complete all the draft chapters and they've been posted on the city website. There is a link in the staff report rather than attaching it, because if you tallied it up, all of the track changes, versions of the chapters, it's over a thousand pages. In final form, it'll probably be between nine fifty and a thousand, so it's, it's a good sized manual. But it's posted on the city website, so we're starting the public review period, and that's why I wanted to come tonight to give you the heads up that it's, it's out there in the wild and wanted to go through the changes so that you have an idea of what it's all about. So as you know, the, the stormwater manual or SDM, as I call it, it's a technical manual for drainage design. So if I, if I start talking like this is a graduate level seminar and hydrologic engineering, just stop me and I can answer, you know, any questions along the way if I say something that doesn't track. The main users are civil engineers and geotechnical consultants that work on development projects. The SDM applies to all public and private projects virtually of any size within Lacey, mainly it's for new development, redevelopment and construction sites, controlling runoff to prevent water pollution basically or flooding. So this DM has nine chapters, those chapters are posted separately, just so the file sizes aren't too big. We address stormwater management through nine core requirements. And within those core requirements are of course other requirements too, but those are the kind of the overriding areas of stormwater management that we address. And we'll talk about BMPs, which are best management practices. There's a wide variety of them, quite a few of them in the manual that that the design engineers apply to the project to control water quality and flows. So the, the SDM is based on the Department of Ecology's Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. That provides our baseline minimum requirements, the, the thresholds for project size that the requirements apply to and definitions that apply throughout the manual. And then at the same time, there's some Lacey specific things in the manual. We can make adjustments. And we do. For instance, submittal criteria, that's, that's on us, the way we want things to be submitted to the city for review and approval. Ecology sets the baseline, so we can be more stringent, more protective of water quality, but not less. So an example of, of some of the local adjustments would be straw bales. Ecology allows use of straw bales to control flows on construction sites. We found that those are not effective and people were misusing them to try to credit control excessive flows of water, so we don't allow those anymore on construction sites. So that's an example of a local adjustment that varies from what ecology has. But for the most part, it's, it's strongly based on ecology's manual. And the other reason for the update, as we mentioned in the previous presentation, is for compliance with the 2019 to 2024 Western Washington Phase Two municipal stormwater permit, which has all kinds of requirements, and this is, this is just one of them, is to update our local program for stormwater management. Um. So like I mentioned, we have it posted on the website. And it's the, what I call the red line chapters, which means the track changes are on, so you can see every change that we made on any one of those chapters. They're not actually red line, they're actually in blue, but it's an old term, they're called red lines. And also posted on the website and attached to the staff report was an attached document that, that summarizes the changes throughout the manual. And there's, there's really three parts. The first part is a table that has ecology's nine significant changes that were required for equivalency with their manual. So those are the ones we had to do. Then there was a second table in that document that had non-required voluntary updates and enhancements, and it goes chapter by chapter, kind of highlighting some of the main changes in the manual. And then the very end of that document, there is a bulleted listing of just various minor changes. So I thought I'd share my screen and kind of just run through that. Let's see. So hopefully this works. If you can see that, let me know. Okay, is that showing for you? Thank you. Okay, so this was what's posted and like I mentioned, the first part describes ecology's changes that we had to implement. So the left column has the changes in ecology's 2019 Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington. There'll be nine rows, the first one there, continuous simulation modeling. And then it, the second column talks about or lists which chapters in the SDM were affected by that change we had to make. So as you can see, the first one affected really four different chapters that we made revisions in response to that change that ecology made. And then in the rightmost column is what the resulting changes in our 2022 version of the manual will be. So I don't know how much detail you want me to, to go through on these. But I can just kind of give you a quick idea of what they're about. The first one, the continuous simulation modeling, that's the hydrologic modeling that the design engineer does to analyze the rainfall on the development site and then the resulting runoff from it. So you, you do modeling of the situation to determine what controls you need and what level of protection. So it's required that the modeling. First of all, as you mentioned, that the Western Washington hydrology model is kind of the standard model. It's, it's free from ecology's website. So almost everybody uses the WWHM and it meets all these requirements. There are other models out. In particular, MGS flood is one that some people use. David, did you have a question?
I, I did, Doug. So the requirements have to be met by who's ever doing the development, right? This isn't, we just have to make sure it's, the city has to make sure the requirement is done by whoever is doing the development, right?
Yeah, these, these are changes that we had to make in our local regulations. Then we apply these to development projects that come in for approval.
Okay, thank you.
These are changes that we're making in our updated edition of our local stormwater design manual for 2022.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, so these, we'll be applying these to do submittals after, well, starting no later than July 1st. So anyway, the first one has to do with continuous simulation modeling. So it's the hydrologic modeling that the engineers do and has to be able to directly model practices like bio retention and permeable pavement and green roofs. So those are low impact development things and the model has to meet that, has to do fifteen minute time step intervals and has to incorporate that Venn-Venuchten algorithm, which is basically has to do with soil moisture and water retention. Now, most design engineers will use, use this kind of software already, so it's, it's an update that there's not really going to affect anybody because they're already using the WWHM anyway. But as other models might get approved, then we can accept them. Number two is replaced hard surfaces redevelopment threshold. This is, this is something that applies to the, the value of a property that's being redeveloped and the basically the, the more extensive the redevelopment is and the more cost or value relative to what was already there, then more requirements may apply. So that's, that's kind of how that applies, but it's not really going to be a huge change for most sites.
Hey, could I interrupt quickly and just, these are in compliance with the Department of Ecology, so as far as making these changes, it's essentially a requirement that we would need to do.
Right. These are the ones we, that are incorporated in the draft manual that's posted. We've made all these changes.
Okay, but they're not, we can't really affect the Department of Ecology's telling us these need to be in here forever.
We just pretty much have to do it.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, maybe I should go through these a little quicker because I don't know what level of detail you want, but the third one is redevelopment, again, project thresholds. And what this one does really, this number three, it, it sort of provides an option for, for a development to take care of their stormwater management for an equivalent area rather than on the particular project that they're working on. So again, this, there aren't, it isn't often that this would be applicable. It's just certain situations that, that might be applied, but we've never had anything like this come up since I've been here. But it's in there. Number four, this, this applies to minimum requirement two, which is pollution prevention during the actual construction phase of a project, when all the soil is exposed. So this applies to all construction sites, basically. And it, it makes the manual and the requirements to manual line up with what ecology did in updating their construction general permit, which they require for projects generally that are anything over an acre in size. So they updated that permit for, for the construction contractor to follow. So now they're updating the, their manual to follow, and so we're updating our manual accordingly. Everybody confused yet? So the fifth one is an update in core requirement five, but it, we already had that in our version of the SDM. It's applying a, it's a soil amendment that you do to the landscape and lawn areas on a new project that helps absorb the rain. So we've, we already had that in our manual, so it doesn't really affect us. It's already in there. The sixth one is core requirement seven. This one applies to sites that would discharge basically to pigeon sound, to marine waters. That's the only, the only one that the only applicability would be at the far north end of Lacey and only if they're doing surface discharge into saltwater. But we incorporate the language so that we'd be in compliance. Number seven is concrete washout, which is a problem on construction sites. The, the concrete is going to be better controlled by this update. So concrete washout is, is specified where you can do it and what you can do with it. Number eight, the ecology added some more source control practices. Now, what source control is, is basically preventing pollution when rain falls on a site. So depending on what you're doing on that site, there could be various pollutants picked up. So source control is trying to prevent the rain from picking up the pollutants in the first place. So you would apply source control depending on what the use of a site is. And they've added some new ones. So some examples there are BMPs for using pesticides in your landscaping, or if you have a nursery or a greenhouse, you might be storing materials outside for that, so they have some source control to prevent that from picking up pollutants, construction demolition, pet waste and so on. So we've incorporated these into our manual in compliance. And the last one of the required ones from ecology is their wetlands guidance. So we've made that, we've made those changes for wetland protection. Basically, if you have high value wetlands, the development project would have to monitor the flows to it and do modeling to be sure that it's kept viable, basically. We have other protections for wetlands too, but we've incorporated that wording in the, into the manual. So those are all of ecology's required changes that we've made in our draft manual. While we're at it, we made some other changes in the manual. So this page of your document goes through and describes chapter by chapter, some of the main changes that are in the manual there. So like the, like for in chapter three, that's all about submittals. That's, that's a largely Lacey specific chapter where it specifies the submittal requirements. And one of the problems we had is at land use stage, we'll get, we get submittals that are incomplete or don't quite have all the information we need, so we've reorganized what should be in a stormwater submittal, particularly the drainage report so that it's, it's better organized and the, the project engineer can be sure to provide complete information. It should speed up the review process and have fewer clock stoppages during land use stage.
Doug, can we, can we touch on that one just a little bit?
Yep.
So this is, this is kind of, this is important for us, because this is where, you know, our department in our, in our permit reviews and our land use reviews interfaces with, with Doug on the, the stormwater report review side. And so I, I brought up this, our staff meeting yesterday morning about how, you know, the stormwater manual, one of the things that the, the Lacey specific things will, will do is help One of the things that the the Lacey specific things will will do is help better address some of these incomplete submittals that that we receive. And some of our our current planners, some of our our planners that are reviewing projects brought up certain projects that have been. You know, difficult to receive complete application information from engineering firms on. It seems like lately, you know, people kind of, what what they. They don't want to do a lot of the hard work upfront to provide a lot of the data and the the technical documentation that. That Doug needs in a stormwater review to ensure that a project will not impact things like ground and surface water. As a result of their projects. And so one of the things I think Doug will will work on with you specifically is is making sure that, you know, our stormwater submittals are complete. And that we're able to, you know, communicate exactly what that is to what to the development community and the engineering community. And I think, you know, we can help on that as well as I think when it comes to our. Kind of public outreach component of this, when we reach out to the development community, when we reach out to engineering firms. We can really focus on this and let them know, hey, this has been a significant issue for us. In our in our project reviews, we're not necessarily getting a lot of good information early on in the process, which is critical to us in the decision making process. And really kind of focus on this as a key aspect of those Lacey specific amendments that we want to make. Does that make sense?
Right, thanks Ryan. Another one that had some. Changes based on local experience was chapter five, that's that's applied for during the construction phase of a project. We've had. Some projects that. Probably shouldn't be working during the winter time, they have offsite flows of turbid water and. This has been an issue on several sites, so we're trying to. Trying to rein that in a little bit without stopping it completely. So one of the things is we've added wording for a for to to potentially have. Them a project that's going to continue work into the winter to do sort of an amendment to their wet weather plan or to their. To their erosion prevention plan for wet season site work, that's what first bullet is referring to. The guidance for broken concrete on construction sites, that comes from ecology because broken concrete can. Effect the pH of receiving water, so we're. We're going to have some wording in there that that references when you can and cannot use broken concrete. And then allowing the use of what ecology calls functionality equivalent technologies. And these are manufactured things that would be equivalent to the. The standard practices that contractors use. For example, on. A construction entrance is typically big chunks of rock that the. Trucks can drive over to get the mud off their tires when they come back out, so they don't track into the street. There are some products out there you can buy that would replace the rock with a. A manufactured like a nubby. You know, hard plastic type of material that's very durable and washable, so you could reuse it instead of having. Dumping rocks on a site, just just as an example, there are other products too, but. If they've gone through an ecology list them as acceptable, then. We have wording now in our manual that we will accept them as well. So it provides an option for contractors. And then on the other one, I wanted to highlight was in chapter seven for flow control. The second bullet there mentions. An appendix that we have for guidance on UIC wells, that's underground injection control. Ecology's 2019 Western Washington manual. Added wording from their. UIC program. They had wording from 2006 that they've updated and integrated into the manual. UIC wells are are like any. It's most of the infiltration systems that are designed under our manual are considered underground injection control wells. And they're usually real shallow, in some cases. Proponents have gone deeper with these, so those are what deep UIC wells. Are that's referenced in that bullet point. So we've incorporated ecology's wording on the DPUIC wells, but we've. Tweeted it for use in Lacey based on local experience. Mainly in terms of making sure they do enough. Subsurface assessment, so that if there's any any contaminants detected. That they won't be mobilizing those contaminants because that was an issue on one site. And then also for design of the wells themselves, there wasn't, hasn't really been any guidance on that in the past. So we're trying to incorporate some guidance on. How wells can be designed, we're not being. Completely prescriptive on that, we want the design engineer to. To take that on if they choose to go this route with a with penetrating the till later and and infiltrating below it. We want them to design the well, but we do have some. Some guidance on on types of things to incorporate in the well design that would help make it work better. So that's a new section that we've added also. So those are some of the main changes that we've. Voluntarily done in our manual and then the final page of this. This document just goes through the rest of the changes, basically, these are all the the really. Minor things that we've done. So the reference to the the current edition of ecology's manual, replacing some words with other words for consistency with ecology. So all through it, you'll see like the word facility is crossed out and BMP replaces it, that's consistency with ecology. And you can see all the way down the line, there's a lot of just. Basically minor changes, correcting. Corrections, revisions, edits for accuracy and so forth. So that's. What we've got. Did you have any, are there any questions on any of these?
Doug, I had a question, so with the, and I'll just profess complete ignorance on most of the. The expertise that you have on this, but are any of these Lacey specific? Changes, does it make it anywhere prohibitive where people might look to develop in other jurisdictions? Or are they consistent with what we might see in Thurston County, Olympia and Tumwater? So is it, is it? Going to make us distinctly different than neighboring jurisdictions?
No, it will it will not make it any harder, we all have the same basic level. That that ecology sets. So we're all at that level. Things like the the guidance for DPUIC wells actually can make a site that. That is not developable, you know. Where where the normal regulations would kill the project because they have nowhere, nothing to do with their stormwater, they can't infiltrate it because of a. Of a restrictive layer near the surface, they have nowhere to discharge offsite, so it could kill a project. So by adding. Some guidance, it provides a potential path forward, so it's. You know, we're not trying to, we're training them to work with. With project developers and engineers to. So that we're all successful.
And I'll I'll mention too, I don't know if anybody saw the recent Olympian article on some track out. And a development project here in Lacey that was done. That the Department of Ecology issued a significant fine to the developer. Regarding some some offsite discharges during wet weather work, that that bullet there about wet weather work is becoming ever more important. Especially given that number one, our our development sites that we currently have that are are greenfield are. You know, I don't want to say all of them are marginal, but there's a reason why a lot of them haven't been developed yet. The the last remaining ones that we do and a lot of that is because maybe they have difficult soil conditions. Which leads them to not drain as well in the winter time. And so that becomes a really important consideration, especially this time of year. And considering what we've been seeing in terms of, you know, volume of of rain in the in the winter time, it's not. It's not just a long drawn out period where we see constant rain, you know, it's it's large rain events. And so we really need to think, you know, hard about. These sites that that, you know, make sure they're designed right, so that. When these large rain events happen, that they don't have these kind of big blowouts where they're, you know, running water across city streets and, you know, mucky water at that. So I think that's a real important one coming up too and and something that, again, through our public outreach, we can kind of focus on, hey, we've had these issues. We we need to kind of kind of solidify our regulations on this and and how might we do that?
So I have a question. Some of this applies right to. The process of construction and and water that's that's generated during that period. And also then it applies to the stormwater in the finished product, if you will.
Correct.
So. And then who? Who goes around to the various construction? I mean, you can fill up, you know, you can pass all the tests and write all this stuff down. How do you know that those practices are being followed during construction?
Well, we have, we have inspectors for that purpose. In fact, it's required that we have inspectors for that purpose as part of our, as part of the permit requirements. But we did that before the permit was in place anyway, we've always done it. You you have to keep an eye on things and and make sure things are being done properly and. And a lot of times there's, you know, discussion back and forth in the field, you know, what's the best thing to do in this situation? And, you know. We want, we want them to be successful and we don't want to to make a mess or or the public, so. Yes.
Our 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 inspection program also though is is coordinated. And it's actually. Expanded since the 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 initial. Stormwater manual and and plan was adopted, so. Our construction practices work is as we issue grading permits, that's when the site. Inspection process starts. And we now have on staff a in the buildings division. A inspector with stormwater emphasis, so they're there at the time the grading permits issued, they're part of that pre-con talking about those management practices for site control, erosion control. And putting those best practices in place and then also monitoring weather forecasts and working with those site contracts through the life of that groundwork. So that they're anticipating weather events and preparing accordingly. And then, of course, as it goes on and the project's finished, then we have the final. Once the final infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure in place, we have inspection programs that go out regularly to check and monitor that with, if it's a residential project, the HOA. Commercial industrial project with the commercial industrial management company, so there is a continuous inspection program from the time that grading permits issued. Then transfers over into the operation and maintenance of those facilities.
So as as the standards change though, something that was built. 25 years ago. Could is potentially no longer in compliance with. The stormwater regulations of today, is that true and how do you work with that?
There there is and and there's two factors to that compliance, one is water quality and the other one is functionality of the system, making sure it's. Performing like it is. And and a lot of times, we can't just go back and retrofit systems until they do some type of land use action to trigger that review. Water quality may be something a little bit different, I'll let Doug talk a little more specific about. About that aspect, but one last thing on the inspection process that we're finding out during wet weather work, as Ryan had mentioned, with the project there at Woodbridge Townhomes. Developers or contractors want to go in and work the entire site because they have infrastructure, they got all these different things going on. And what that challenge is more disturbed makes it more problematic of trying to control. Stormwater on site construction phases, so we're going to try and look at maybe working in pre-con about looking at phasing of construction so that we know what what whether we're trying to occur. So we don't expose as much of the site as possible, that's one of the things too that we need to be looking at and considering. Doug, can you talk about the? Future changes to like water quality or stormwater flow standard and how they relate to built environments?
Yeah, you know, stormwater field just keeps evolving, it's it's been very dynamic, especially since these permits came into effect. We'll probably be updating. This stormwater manual that we're updating this year, we'll probably do it again in five or six years, it's kind of just been the pattern lately. For existing sites that have existing facilities, they're not required to to. Upgrade them to current, you know, water quality standards. Unless it's unless they're redeveloping, if you're doing extensive enough redevelopment, then you could potentially need to to upgrade that part of it. So it kind of depends, but for an existing, like say for a homeowner association that they have their wet pond and dry pond. We just, we just require them to maintain those facilities. So we have a whole program dedicated to the maintenance of existing facilities and we work. Work with them on, you know, technical guidance, we provide dumpsters. You know, sometimes.
Yeah.
Talk to a limit. And, you know. Basically, just assistance with the inspections and maintenance of those systems, which we're required to do, so. That's that's part of it is we had, we're required to do that, but we. We would do it anyway because it's for the good of the community.
Yeah, right.
We could wish, Ed, Eddie has a question.
Yeah, Doug, thanks, thanks for sharing this with us. My question is along the same lines as Daphne's, I guess. But I'm curious what your expectation is from the development community as far as response to the public outreach? Do you expect this to be? You know, some ho-hum updates or is there stuff in here that may? Generate some significant pushback or what is your, I know you can't always predict, but what is your general feeling about what what's going on with this?
Well, for the for the general public, I would expect that it. That they. Ignore it. Because for most people, it's. You know, not in their, not in their realm, it's not going to affect them. It's it's the development community and in particular the engineers that the developer hires to design their project. So. My my main outreach is going to be focused on. The companies we work with. That that do design engineering and the geotechnical consultants and. You know, those are the people that really use the manual and have to apply these things. And. You know, the ecology's minimum requirements are in effect all over Western Washington, so. Most of them are going to be seeing these changes no matter where they work and most of them work in different communities. So they're going to see basically the same thing. Our in our manual, the big change is, you know, the way we want our submittals to be done, so. I anticipate that would be a prime focus of my outreach would be saying, this is, this is what we've got as a kind of a template. For your submittal, for your stormwater site plan. And I would want feedback on that to be sure that that. Looks good to them. It's it's not really adding. Much, maybe a little bit, but it's it's not really adding a lot, but compared to our 2016 manual. We've taken what was in a bunch of long paragraphs and broken it up and. And and made subsections, so I think it's a lot clearer now. So I'm hoping it's it's easier for them, especially if I get an actual template developed. That's on my. Hope to do list for this break is to have a drainage report template they could use. So I want to get some feedback on that approach also from them.
Hey. Doug, you you mentioned the whole bales of hay thing as an example. I'm naive, I thought bales of hay were a great idea. So. That's been replaced by something, what are they, what are they doing now? That's better than bales of hay?
Well, there are other, there. There are other approaches to controlling flow that that work better. So that's, that's all we've done is eliminated it as a as something to be used for flow control. You can still spread hay on a site as a cover, you know, to keep to keep the erosion from happening. You know, that's fine, but people were using straw bales to try to control flow. And then they ignore them and then they they kind of fall apart and then it just doesn't work, it was making a mess. So for that, for that purpose of trying to control flow. We've said, no, let's let's do something.
So we're seeing seeing more as the synthetic like. Fake straw kind of like those black rolls of. Like tubes of like straw or something that's not straw. What are they, what are they like?
Well, will you do channels, maybe have rock check dams in those channels to help help control and break up the flow? Rather than using a straw. Rather than using a straw bale that's going to eventually kind of wear through and then it's not working anymore.
Yeah, I always thought those were temporary anyway. Yeah. It is, it is amazing how a holding pond, like I'm in Jubilee. You know, when we have a lot of water, they, they, they've, they actually get pretty full, right? But two days later, that water is percolated down. I mean, it's just amazes me how, how fast the earth kind of just takes it back.
And if it's a wet pond, then that's a problem because it should be holding water. If it's a filtration pond, that's good that if.
I think we have a couple combos of things out here. So interesting. Okay.
So, um, I just want to mention that if there's any other questions, be happy to answer. But at this point, um, in the process where we're at, um, you know, obviously we wanted to introduce you to the topic this last meeting. And then the purpose of this meeting was to go over the draft changes. So, um, before you, so you had a chance to review them and ask questions before we did do the public outreach. So the next step is going to be that, that public outreach and then coming back to you, uh, with the results of that and holding a public hearing probably, I don't know, in the April timeframe, give or take. So that it can move forward to council for adoption prior to the June 30th deadline. So if there's any other questions, that's, that's the process at this point, um, that it'll be taking. So, um, happy to answer any other questions, but I just wanted to let you know that.
And if not, I'll just say that I appreciate everybody's attention and, and staying awake while I talk about what's probably a dry subject.
Not really. A very wet subject.
That was a pun, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, Doug, we, uh, value your explanation. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, with that happening, I'm going to go back to the question that I asked, uh, the commissioners. What, if you have more thoughts about things to share with the city, welcome, Mark. I hadn't seen you. Just popped into my screen. So was there more thoughts? Peg loves trees.
The only thing that I would say, Dave, is I just, I, I think it's really important that we continue to acknowledge the, the inability to get staffing and, um, quality candidates and, and, you know, not hold that against, you know, city staff or anything like that. Because I just, you know, every industry is suffering from the ability to retain, to attract and to retain staffing. And so I know there was a lot of dialogue about that. And, and I think we just need to respect that that's the current reality of whatever industry you're in. And whether that's public sector or private sector, it's just, we're all competing for the same great people. So I think, I don't know, I just thought that was relevant to say, so.
I, I agree. It, I, from my, I'm in the business world. I know what it's like trying to hire people and it's definitely tough. Obviously, um, Scott is in charge of that, um, city manager. And, you know, we're not in his seat. We don't know all the specifics he's dealing with. But, um, I think, I, I believe that he, he was listening. And so the council, uh, was also, so I think that's good. Any other thoughts from people? Okay.
The, the, the council seems very sincere in the work they're doing. And they were appreciative and kind and complimentary towards the planning commission. And that was very nice. Appreciate that.
Yes, I, I totally agree. Was, it's good to, to meet with the council and kind of get a perspective. So, okay, we'll move on to any other communication. Oh, Rick?
Um, we may have, uh, been able to figure out for attendee, uh, we might be able to turn on his audio. And so we can try to see, to do that, to see if he has any, not to share with planning commission to, I wish I'd like to do so.
Okay, Joel.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Joel.
Oh, it works. You know, Harbor Homes was, uh, gonna build affordable condos in Lacey. And I just wondered where that is and when does it happen and so forth?
You said Harbor Homes?
Yeah. And I think they're going to call it Tanglewild.
That's a project that, that hit the news, oh, several months ago. And it's actually in the unincorporated growth area of Lacey. So it's in the county jurisdiction in, uh, Tanglewild, uh, just south of Martin Way. The Ranger Street or some, one of the, I can't remember which street is the, uh, street that tags off into that neighborhood. But it's a, a undeveloped, uh, piece of property that is tucked in a way. And that was the project they're looking for. So I know they started the count process with the county. I just don't know where they are in that review process with Thurston County. It indicate they want to do condominiums, which is a, a good sign because that's something that we would like to see more in our market. I think any, any city on, in Western Washington would like to see more in their market is the, the, that having the option of have condominium type housing to provide a different variety or option for people to purchase.
You know, we talked about affordable condos near Fred Meyer in Lacey. That would be within the city limits, I think. And, uh, that would be, uh, very walkable too.
Okay, any, anything else you wanted to mention to the commission, Joel?
Oh, um, no, that was it. Just getting this, uh, sound and video.
Thanks for sticking in with us. I appreciate it.
So I'll, I'll just mention Joel sent me an email. Joel, I'll follow up with you on that email with an exact, I'll, I'll show you, maybe provide you with a map of where that project is, to give you more information. I'm generally aware of, of it. So I'll, I'll follow up with a map tomorrow morning and, and send you that, see if a better idea of where that project's located.
Okay, nice.
Alrighty, thanks, Joel. Uh, anything else for the good?
I have a quick question for, uh, Dave or Rick or both. Any update on, uh, uh, new members?
We did, uh, Rick, myself and the mayor did, uh, two interviews and, um, uh, we felt they were both, they were both very interesting individuals. And I, I think, uh, Rick, is that going to be on, on the council's agenda for one of, for sure, one of them?
Uh, yes, I believe, um, Alan Baum that we, uh, recommended for appointment, I think it's this Thursday night. I actually had forgotten that it was on the agenda. That was, the mayor ultimately decided after, um, the interviews, as Dave said, we cut, had two really good candidates, but we still wanted to, we only had two applicants. So we wanted to move forward with one and continue to recruit for the second position. And, and try to, you know, continue to reach out to maintain that, um, diversity that we have in the planning commission to represent our community, you know, from, you know, all points as, and all, all factors of our community.
Thank you.
So we're halfway there. And we've decided, you know, we're, we're going to reach out to, uh, some other ways of recruitment potentially, you know, getting some suggested. So we, we want to make sure that we best reflect our community.
Right, uh, this book is not on this, this week's agenda, so it'll probably be on the 17th.
Alrighty. Okay, anything else for the good? And rumor was that we were not going to have a next meeting on the 15th. Is that?
Uh, I was, I was just going to mention, it sounded like there was at least multiple planning commission members that weren't going to be available for the next meeting. So, um, we may end up canceling that meeting. We'll let you guys know, um, but at this point, um, at this point, we'll have a meeting unless you're here otherwise.
Okay, so stay tuned. Uh, the next meeting is February 15th, but it may end up getting canceled. So watch those emails.
So isn't there a party that some of us have not been invited to? Is that why people aren't?
Um, I'm thinking, Gail, I think you might be correct.
Yeah, see.
I think Eddie's involved in it for sure. And maybe Daphne, I'm not sure, but. You're spot on, Gail. Okay, with that, thank you, commissioners. Thanks Doug for the report. Thank you, staff. And we are adjourned. Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.